Good evening and welcome to the Portland City Council Regular Meeting of July 22, 2014. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and Moment of Silence for our mayors serving over this. I don't know why you all hop up so fast, it takes me awhile.
We do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who have trespassed as we have sinned, and we use not temptation, but deliver us from evil, and thus coming in power and glory forevermore. The Lords please call the roll. Mike Snyder?
Present.
Ron Ackerman?
Present.
Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Gabe Belo?
Present.
Jerry Turoli?
Present.
Nikota Friedas?
Present.
Margaret Phillips?
Present.
Thank you. We have no minutes tonight, they'll be at the next meeting. The chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the role of notification of this meeting. I would just like to take a moment to thank Mr. Snyder for stepping in for me at the last meeting. I called him at quarter to seven, so I appreciate the last minute.
Glad you could.
Thank you. The Mayor is not here this evening, and so we'll go right to the Auditorial Report.
Madam President.
Thank you, the Treasurer's Report.
Madam President, I thought I'd give a little information on the bed taxes. Just for the fun of it, I pulled up a report from 2007. That was a figureback of seven years ago. And in July of that year, we had taken in, and I'll leave off the cents, forty-two thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Now, this July, with a couple of fairly big places having not reported yet, because they have until the end of the month, they, we have taken in fifty-eight thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Now, of course, the Davis-Bessie people being here in the first three months of the year made quite a bit of difference. The big difference in numbers is that we have a lot more condo owners who are paying. We now have thirty-eight payees, and in 2007, we had twenty-two. So it is a busy time for landlords. Thank you, Madam President.
A Director's Report.
Nothing.
Thank you, Safety Service Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, we did get Fulton Street open when I said we would the last time. It took some work, but that got done. They just put down grass today, and we'll see how that goes. They hyperseeded that area just today. One of the issues that's been happening is detour signs weren't all in town. I will drive that in the morning to see if they are finally gone. I talked to them this morning. And so we will make sure that those get out of the way. The hospital did call on that too. That we're working on. I want to announce the senior picnic is August 1st at Park. Twelve o'clock, we serve hamburgers, hot dogs, and all the picks and score that for the seniors and the county. A great turnout. Usually I get a couple hundred people, and that's awesome. That's an enjoyable day for all of us. The two ordinances on here, 1714 and 1814 specifically, I'd like to see if you guys would pass those today. The one for the sanitary district, 1814, the Commissioners are on a little bit of a time crunch to get that passed because they have funding sitting out there that by the end of the month, they need to make a move on. So that's important to us to get that on the table if we could, please. To me, MS Contract, of course, is the other one. So I'd ask your guys tonight to please pass those two. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Police Chief's Report.
Nothing tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Fire Chief's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. We have got a project that's going on. Mr. Turoli's had the opportunity to help us out a little bit. Portland Firefighters Association and the Fire Department, we're really big on history. We went back and we've researched our history from 1870, and we're going all the way to present on current members and deceased members. And we, the Firefighters Association, had a special grave plaque designed and made to place on Portland firefighters' graves throughout the city. Through a lot of work, and we're going to be getting with the Beacon, and the Beacon has agreed to help me find the rest of them that we've lost, but I've got 223 firefighters, deceased firefighters, that has up to date from 1870 to current. And each one of these will get a nice bronze emblem with a firefighter's flag beside the grave. The list is extremely interesting in how we found it, but we've been able to locate how many chiefs we've had. The only thing that scares us is we only have two living chiefs left, and it's me and Morton, so we're a little concerned about that. But it's very interesting, the history that we found on that. Do you know anybody that was a firefighter and is deceased? Please get with me. If they're not on the list, we'll get them on the list, but we hope within the next two weeks that we'll be out at the cemetery starting to place these on the graves. Thank you, Madam President.
Under correspondence, I have a letter from Millennium. Millennium is the owner of Bay Meadows. It is going to be renamed to Perry's Blen, though it doesn't say when, but it's with the renamed to Perry's Blen. They're going to do some remodeling and rehaving of Bay Meadows, and they are going to be using the tax credited program. And it looks like they are simply waiting for that money to come through. It does, I've read the letter twice. I don't see that it changes the occupancy criteria, but it does say that if we have any questions or want to know more about the project, if you contact them, the clerk will have this in her file if you have any questions. Additionally, I have the Planning and Development Committee Minutes of 6:314, the Parks and Recreation and Cemetery Minutes of 5:13 and 6:10, the Ed-Hot Committees Minutes of 6:25, and the Finance Committee Minutes of 7:17. Could I have a motion to accept the correspondence this day? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Could I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We will now go to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. We have no third or second readings tonight, and we say we will now go to the new readings of ordinances and resolutions. Will the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 16-14. Ordnance 16-14, an ordinance to approve the 2014 replacement pages to the Portland Codified Ordances and declaring an emergency. Does Counsel wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 16-14? Seeing none, we will move that to the next meeting for a second reading, 8:12. Will the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 17-14. Ordnance 17-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a contract with the Norwalk Area Health Services and Ohio Not-for-Profit Corporation, DBA North Central EMS, to provide emergency ambulance services to the city and its residents and declaring an emergency. Does Counsel wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 17-14? Mr. Turoli?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to waive the three readings.
I have a motion to waive the three required readings on ordinance 17-14. Do I have a second?
Madam President, I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing none, will the Court please call the roll. Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 17-14? Mr. Turoli?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on ordinance 17-14. Do I have a second?
Madam President, I'd like to second that motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman. Any discussion? Will the Court please call the roll. Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 17-14? Mr. Turoli?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that we pass the ordinance, but I would like Chief Johnson to put a couple of highlights on that contract.
He can do that at the discussion.
Oh, he can, okay. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I have a motion to approve ordinance 17-14. Do I have a second?
Second, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder. Any discussion? Chief?
Thank you, Madam President. The fire and EMS is a never-changing, never-ending, changing mechanism. I guess the easiest way to put it. North Central EMS, we have developed a fantastic working relationship with them over the past few years. We work as one unit. When they go, we go. When we go, they go. We train together. We do everything together. And it's really worked out fantastic. We sat down earlier this year to start putting the fine tuning to the contract, and an idea came up, what if we did this? And it panned out that we were able to figure that out. The biggest change that we're able to bring back to the constituents is that if you live in the city, or a taxpayer within the city, or any of the jurisdictions that they serve, and have insurance, there will be no out-of-pocket costs to you. They will settle for just the insurance side of it. That is a major, major factor. They will absorb that. If you don't have insurance, as you're still a taxpayer and resident in the jurisdictions, then you're billed at a reduced rate and they'll work with a payment plan with you. So that's a very big hit. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Mr. Snyder?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank Chief Johnson and Mr. Wilber and all those others that worked on this, and had the foresight to come up with this idea and figure out a way to make it happen. I know it's been a long time coming. You guys put in a heck of a lot of work, so thank you.
Any further discussion? Will the Court please call the roll. Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 17-14 has passed. Will the Court please read by title and summary only, ordinance 18-14? Ordnance 18-14, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Safety and Service to enter into a second amendment to the agreement with the Ottawa County Board of Commissioners for the provision of wastewater treatment services to the Ottawa County Sanitary Sewer Sub District for Erie Township and declaring an emergency. Does Counsel, does Counsel wish to take any action this evening on ordinance 18-14? Mrs. Friedas?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the three required readings for ordinance 18-14. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Any discussion on the waiving of the readings? Seeing none, will the Court please call the roll. Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 18-14? Mrs. Friedas?
I'd like to make a motion that we retain the emergency clause for ordinance 18-14.
I have a motion to retain the emergency clause on ordinance 18-14. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Sardi. Any discussion? Will the Court please call the roll. Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Does Counsel wish to take any further action on ordinance 18-14? Mrs. Friedas?
I make a motion that we pass ordinance 18-14.
I have a motion to pass ordinance 18-14. Do I have a second? Mr. Snyder?
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Thank you. Mr. Colston? Obviously, this ordinance just allows the Commissioners to move forward and hopefully get some additional funding. Has there been any discussion on the timetable as to implementation if these funds come through? Or do we know what their funds will go?
I have not heard of the timetable, but I know the funds are available, but they need to make that decision by the end of the month. So that's why we're moving on fast. I know the Commissioners, Mr. Wilber, said they talked about today or yesterday. Today. So they're moving forward from there, and that was the reason we took this call.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Will the Court please call the roll. Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordnance 18-14 has passed. Lately, we have been meeting with TNACOG, and for those who don't know what TNACOG stands for, it's the Toledo Metropolitan Area Council of Government, on a few issues concerning the city and a number of our council members have attended their seminars. In a discussion about effective council meetings, it was questioned why we have our discussion at the end of the meeting, when members of the audience cannot comment on ordinances that may be passed that evening. The council has but one role in the government system, and that is to establish and oversee the ordinances of the city. It would appear to be only logical to allow members of the audience to speak about the ordinance prior to its passing. Additionally, we were told that a number of other cities, villages, and townships have gone to this format to allow individuals that perhaps had a question but would not come to an entire meeting, as they would have to sit through the whole thing to get their question answered. So additionally, we have also decided to have individuals who wish to speak designated as to provide a more concrete record for the clerk. This way, there is no more misspellings of names and addresses incorrect for the public record. I would entertain a motion, I sent all of you a copy of the rules of council, and I would now entertain a motion for you to accept the change in the rules of council. Mr. Snyder?
Madam President, I'd like to make that motion of accepting the change of the rules of council effective the next council meeting, first meeting in August.
August 12.
If that works.
Could I have a second?
That's certainly good.
Thank you, Mr. Turoli. Any discussion? Will the Court please call the roll. Mike Snyder?
Yes.
Ron Ackerman?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Gabe Belo?
Yes.
Jerry Turoli?
Yes.
Nikota Friedas?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you. Order of the agenda, we will now begin public speaking, public comments at the beginning of the meeting, and it will be between the guest presentation and the Mayor's Report. You will sign in prior to, so that the clerk has a record. If there is an ordinance that appears on the agenda, or is going to appear on the agenda, I will announce that, so that if you wish to speak to that ordinance, you can then resign up to speak to that, to that issue, so that you have the opportunity. If we're going to pass an ordinance, if we're going to waive the three readings, I'll let you know at the beginning of the meeting, so that you have an opportunity to comment if you wish. Or if for some reason we have an ordinance that's going to be added to the agenda, I will also announce that, so that again, you will have an opportunity to sign in on that issue. Am I making that clear? You're looking at me?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay.
You have. I don't understand, Madam President, how.
I'm not going to take any other comment at this time about this. I just want to make sure I'm making that point clear. Because you were looking at me like I wasn't making that point clear. Okay. But you can, when we come to public comment, you can say other things. Additionally, I have given you all a copy of a conference called Small Towns and Big Futures. This is put on by Ohio Archap, Real Community Conference. This is a division of WSOS. This is the third time we've had this conference. The Mayor and I, I think Mr. Hatfield went last year. I know the other, the previous auditor has gone. Mrs. Mel. And it is an excellent conference on small towns. Did you hang down for part of it, one year? If you have the opportunity and you'd like to go, please call Mrs. Porter, and she will walk you through the process of getting everything paid for and getting your hotel set up. And I believe when I sent you the original email, I told you that it was at Easton. It's at Polaris. So it has been at Easton, they moved it to Polaris this year. But like I said, if you have the opportunity to go one day, two days, please look it over, read about it. If you want to ask me any questions about it, feel free to do so. But it's, it's one of the few conferences that I recommend. I don't often recommend conferences, but that one's a good one. Okay, we will now go to business room for Mr. Snyder.
Madam President, everyone, nothing tonight. Thank you, President.
Oh, my God.
We cheer.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Ackerman!
Thank you, Madam President. I have two announcements to make. One, the Parks, Recreation, and Safari Meeting will take place at 6:30 on Tuesday, August 12. And some bad news, the West End Three-on-Three Community Picnic for August 2nd has been canceled due to some family medical issues of the organizers. So my prayers are with the poor and family as they deal with these family issues, with illnesses within full cycle. So that's the reason the tournament has been canceled. Looking forward to bringing it back next year. So that'll be all tonight, Madam President. Thank you.
Mrs. Sardi?
Thank you.
Nothing, Madam President. Thank you. Mr. Belo?
Thank you, Madam President. The next Planning and Development Committee meeting will be August 5th at 5:30, regularly scheduled time here at City Hall. Regarding the new council rules and the agenda, after the last meeting, Mr. Notar asked me about our pursuit of that, and I referenced other cities that are doing that as well. I didn't have any names of those cities at the time, but I looked into it following, because I knew that there were some, so I have a list. Oak Harbor, Marblehead, Huron, Vermilion, Mummy, Perrysburg, Woodville, and Bellevue. So these are communities that have their public comment, not at the end, but either at the top or at the middle of the agenda. Plus Clyde, Mylin, Oberlin, Avon Lake, Bay Village, Westlake, Brea, Strongsville, and Booster. So I don't think we're being out of line or out of the ordinary by getting in line with communities like this that have established practices. So that's why I voted yes. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Turoli?
Just one little announcement speech, but I, a thank you. My wife and I had the, it was a fortunate chance to attend a heck of an event Sunday. Thank you, two real things, and we're thrilled. I know. Sorry. It was the fashion of friends of Ottawa County. If next year comes around, or their next event, please attend. It's touching. I, thank you.
Mrs. Friedas? I have nothing. Thank you. I have nothing additional. Members of the audience, Mr. Yampi?
Mr. Yampi, 117 Cedar Street. I'm happy to announce that we have 19,000 hits on our website, say Waterworks Park. There's a lot of good comments in there, and I appreciate the people going to the website. And I have a question for the Treasurer, Ms. Hansen? You said there was 22 landlords in '07 that reported their bed tax, or the bed?
Landlords, hotels, condos, bed wreckers, whatever.
Okay, so say our guest in was one of the 22 then.
Right.
Now it's up to 58.
It's up to 30.
30, oh.
30.
Uh, there's approximately 700 condos in Port Clinton, and I'm thinking that there's more people renting out those condos than they're actually reporting. Is there any way that you can trace those guys down?
We try. We've had things on the website. We've had articles in the paper. Mr. Snyder has helped through his business, telling me people who no longer use his service because they pay through that service. So we try. But short of going to every condo and knocking on the door and checking addresses, we can't really get everybody to it.
Some of these associations aren't too keen on the idea of the people renting out their condos. They're actually bringing it to their attention about, you know, cease and desist on the renting out the condos. Maybe it might be a good idea to get in touch with the association and see what they have to say about it.
I have contacted some of them, but it didn't do much.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Notar?
Thank you, Madam President. Rick Notar, 608 East Perry. A couple of questions for you, Madam President, and that is, before the meeting starts, how do you know in advance whether or not an ordinance will have the three readings waived at the meeting?
Because generally, I'm not going to say that it'll happen every time, but we have an administrative meeting on Tuesday mornings.
Who's waiting, please?
The Mayor, the Auditor, Safety Service Director, the Law Director, and myself. Our sole purpose is to discuss the council meeting. It's pretty much our, and if there are any ordinances that the administration would like passed that evening, they'll tell me. Generally, then, I email the council members and say, this is a request by the administration for you to consider. We're not, I'm not band-aiding it, just that this is a consideration. So, so generally, I know, I can't tell you that I will always know, but I probably, we probably can hit 90 percent.
Okay, if you don't always know, and there is an instance that, that happens, and that wasn't, you will allow the public to.
And when it comes to if they're going to waive the three required readings, and I don't know ahead of time, when it comes to discussion, we'll open it up to the audience.
Also, before the meeting starts, how can a resident comment on an ordinance that's to be added to the agenda when generally the council hasn't even gotten it? Generally, they like to till the day before, or if that, or maybe hours before the meeting.
When it gets passed up to council, we'll pass it up to the audience. We're going to try to do.
Before the meeting?
Before the meeting. We're going to try to make this as effortless as possible, because the sole purpose of a council meeting is to pass ordinances or to reject ordinances. If you read the Ohio Revised Code, that's what our job is. That's our only job, is to oversee the ordinances of the city of Port Clinton. And our job, and part of that job, is to make sure that you have the opportunity to comment. And so we're making every effort possible so that people can comment on those ordinances. You laugh and joke, but you do whatever you want. I mean sincere.
It is pretty laughable, Madam President. Regarding Mr. Belo's comments, may I make a comment about that?
I'm sorry, what?
Regarding Mr. Belo's comments, may I make a comment about that?
Yes.
I ask you, yeah, after the meeting, you know, of other communities, and you certainly satisfied that. What I will say is, my feeling is that justifying Port Clinton changing their agenda based on just because other communities do it, is pretty much like trying to justify the conditions of the cemeteries in Port Clinton based on other communities having had problems also. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Mr. Finkie?
Don Finkie, two-twenty-two Adams Street. Within the last month or so, there's been the insinuation by a few citizens that court, as a hidden agenda, court's been very open with our goals, both to the council and to the public. Those goals of being respons, having responsible development of the citizens' resources in all areas of development, industrial, academic, recreational, and business, there is no hidden agenda. That is our goal.
Madam President, I have a couple of questions. Mr. Finkie, did court have a position on the school levy when it came up for the new construction of the school? And wouldn't that be considered an opportunity for economic or educational development issue?
We did not have, because we didn't see a problem with it.
So you didn't advocate for or against it? Neutral?
No, exactly.
Well, I received a report on a, when the petition was being circulated, that a downtown employee named Pam was approached by a woman, or, sorry, a woman named Pam was approached by, who he, who she described as Mr. Philibon, seeking a signature for the petition, and that it was important because condos were going to go in at Lakeview Park, is what she reported to me. So I thought, I certainly hope that's not the case for all the court members that pursued that. And I gather that she still signed it, but it's still just a give on the ballot.
That's a debate.
Mr. Yonk?
I have a question now for the auditor. The petition that's come back from the Board of Elections, what is the status on that?
Currently, it's still in my office.